Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello again, everybody. It's been so long since we all saw each other. Just want to remind you, our next budget workshop meeting is going to be Thursday at 6:30 again. And also, Joe, if you can help us out too, and so that everybody knows, prior to our regular scheduled meeting on the Tuesday, the 21st, at 6 o'clock, there's a town vote at Town Hall, right, Ron? So, and there's bonding issues that are being voted on that do affect the Board of Education. So I'd like to get the word out to all the voters in Monroe to come out and support the schools. So if we can get something out, emails, PTA. And Ron, who runs that? Is that Town Council?
It's actually run by, I think, the Town Clerk's office. I mean, Vito will get the meeting going.
Okay. All right. Yeah. 6 o'clock, yeah. I'll talk to them because I don't know the length of that for us to go there and then get back here. We'll try our best on that. So that meeting might be a little after 7:00 because I, depending on how many people show up, our votes might be absolutely needed to that.
That's this Monday?
No, the 21st.
The Tuesday.
Prior, yes.
Tuesday, 21st.
Yeah, after Martin Luther King Day, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
But we need a good showing for that so that we can get the bonding packages, right, Ron? That's what it is? For our capital projects approved, and then we'll get back here. So that's the plan. Anyone here for public participation concerning the budget? Public participation concerning the budget? Anyone sign up? Okay, we're going to move right along. We're going to continue our budget workshop. Enjoyed the conversation yesterday, very good. I enjoyed the questions and the feedback from the admin, so I'd like to continue that throughout. And we will hear first from special education.
Does everybody have a copy of our presentation? We made them for you because our numbers are small. I know that they're length, but numbers are tiny. That's a good point, Greg. The font is tiny, the numbers are not. Good point. Good point. Okay, we're going to get started. So first, we'd like to say thank you today for spending time with us going over our budget and listening to all of our reasons for why we put together this budget and giving us the feedback. We appreciate your time. So thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to get started. So as Joe had mentioned, our shared vision this year in this budget season is that we are trying to support all of our high-need students in special education. We do have a lot of students that have diverse and complex needs, and we want to make sure that we're aligning the supports in the best possible way that we can. So our budget this year supports both our students in and out of district. Before we get started on looking at numbers, I thought we'd share some success stories for you. So we had our graduating class, our seniors, who had special education services. There were 31 students who graduated. And out of those 31 students, we had 18 students who went to a two- or four-year college. We had five students who enrolled in apprenticeships. We had six students that moved on to our community program. We had one student who took a gap year, and we had one student who joined the military. So this is very exciting for us, and we're really very proud of our students. So we just wanted to share some of that information before we got into our numbers. Okay? Okay, so first, we're looking at students moving in with IEPs. I know that you have seen this chart in the past. If we look at the key, the red is the students that transferred in during the school year, and the blue is the students that transferred in during summer. You can see from 2019, we had 36 students. 2020, 2021, 27 students. We saw that spike in '21, '22, where we had 47 students who moved into district. A little bit of a drop in '22, '23, with 32 students moving in. And then we actually were a lot smaller last year. We only had 15 students that moved into district who were identified with special education services. But you can see we're rising up here this year in the '24, '25 school year. We had 11 students who moved in over the summer months, and so far, we've had seven students who've moved into district. So we're already at 18. So that number is definitely going up. And while these numbers are important, we always want to remember that it's the complexity of the kids that move into district that could impact our funding, could impact our staffing, and impact our programming. So that's something that we need to make sure that we're watching. Moving on to the next slide, we created this graph. Someone had actually, someone on the board actually asked us for this last year, I think it was you, Dennis. And thank you for doing that because we incorporated it into our presentation this year. So the special account by grade. So as you can see from the top key, our preschool is in blue, Monroe Elementary in red, Fawn Hollow in yellow, and Stepney in green. So if we look left to right, we have 60 identified students enrolled in preschool at the moment. In kindergarten, we have a total of 27 students enrolled who are identified with special education needs. 10 of them, the largest number, is at Stepney. In first grade, we have a total of 42 students who are identified, and the highest number, again, is at Stepney. In second grade, we have 38 total students who are identified with special education needs, and 16 of them are at Fawn Hollow. That trend continues. In third grade, we did rise up to 48 students who have identified, who have been identified, but 27 of them are at Fawn Hollow. In fourth grade, we have 35 students, again, the highest number, at Fawn Hollow at 14. And then in fifth grade, we have a total of 50 students, and the highest number is at Stepney at 19. But Fawn Hollow is right behind us there at 18. So all of these numbers here, we have a total of 300 students in the elementary grades. So that's 46% of our special education population in grades pre-K through 5. Okay, so this chart goes along in the same spirit of what Jen was talking about, except this is specific to our students in the secondary population. So grades 6 through 12 that are supported under an IEP. In blue, you'll see your Jockey Hollow students, and then in red, you'll see your Masick High School students. So ironically, 6th and 8th grade, both of them have 42 students that are identified. 7th grade, you see a little bit of a higher population with 52 students that are supported under an IEP. 9th and 10th grade, both have 41 students. And then you kind of see a natural decline of our 11th and 12th graders, who are upper classmen, have 38 students identified and supported with an IEP in 11th grade, and then 37 students supported with an IEP in 12th grade. Just to go back for one second. So that's 293 of our students. That's okay. That's 293 students that are in grades 6 through 12. So that's another 45% of our students for the population.
And so like the other 9% of our population covers our students that are either outplaced and/or our community students, part of our community program.
Okay, so this next visual that we created, we wanted to, we meet every month, and I talk about the enrollment, and we talk about, you know, our financials, but I never really break down the different disabilities that we have in district. So what we did was we took a look at the most prevalent disabilities district-wide. There are 13 different disability types under the IDEA. What we did was we took the five most prevalent that we see in district. So the key at the top, just bear with me because we have a lot of abbreviations here. So the blue says SLP, so that's speech and language pathology. So those are students who have a primary disability of speech and language. So if you look across the graph from left to right, you can see that we have a total of 87 students in district who have a primary disability of speech. And you can see, as you move, Monroe Wells' numbers are at 30, and then Stepney's numbers are at 28, Fawn Hollow 19. And you see how they decrease, and Jockey Hollow and STEM, and they decrease at Masick. And that's pretty typical for students because they still may have speech and language needs, but their primary disability is no longer speech and language. So that's their primary. You can have more than one disability, but you can only have one primary on paper, if you will. So that's the speech and language. The next category that was pretty prevalent for us in district is SLD, which is a specific learning disability. So these are students who have disabilities in the areas of reading, writing, or math. We have 206 students across district who have that identification. As you can see, as you look across, you know, we have 11 students at Monroe Wells', 23 at Stepney, Fawn Hollow 33. And then once those students combine, that's why that number jumps up at Jockey Hollow, because all those students are together between Jockey Hollow and STEM, and then they move on to Masick. So those numbers are kind of consistent going in that direction. Our next disability type that we highlighted is ASD, which is autism spectrum disorder. And we have 59 students total in district who have that disability as well. So we have 11 students at Monroe Wells', 8 at Stepney, 8 at Fawn Hollow, and then we have that 14 at Jockey Hollow and STEM that's combined, and then 17 students at Masick High School. In the green, it says DD, and that's a developmental delay. It's an overarching disability for students who are under the age of six. A lot of students who come into our preschool program, who are referred in from birth to three, or referred in by their parents, if they qualify for services, we typically utilize that disability code, that disability type of developmental delay. The difference with this disability versus others is that, as I had said before, we have to make sure that we test students prior to their sixth birthday to see if they still qualify for services, and they do, it needs to be more specific. So they may move to a speech disability, or a specific learning disability, or something along those lines. So that's why you see that large spike at Monroe Elementary at 52 for developmental delay, because the majority of those kids are in our preschool program. Some are in Monroe Wells' as well. And then we have a small number at Stepney at 5, and then we have, you know, 14 students at Fawn Hollow. So typically, those students would still receive services, but as I said, they wouldn't be under developmental delay any longer. And then finally, to round out our top five, we have attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, and we have 74 students in district who have that disability, who have that disability type or identified with it. So you can kind of see, if you look across the different grade levels, the numbers really increase with age, where you can see our highest numbers are in that Jockey Hollow, STEM, and Masick area with a total of 50 students who have that as their primary disability. So looking at all of these, and this is just a snapshot, like I said, of these top five, these most prevalent disabilities in district, this is 497 of our 651 students. This is about 76% of our population.
Okay, so this, we've pretty historically shared with you guys. This is our referral and eligibility trends in data. So it's about the kids that are going through a referral process to determine if they qualify for special education services. So you can see, looking at the chart, starting off in 2019, 2020 school year, we've been on a pretty consistent uptick. Last year, our numbers were a little bit less than the 2022, '23 school year. But right now, this year, we are currently, we have a total to date of 52 referrals, with 25 students that have been found eligible, which is about 67%. And going back historically, the 2019, 2020 school year, we had a 62% eligibility percentage for the 2020, 2021 school year. It was a 67% eligibility percentage for the '21, '22 school year. It was 74%. And then for the '22, '23, it was 76%. And then last year was probably our highest percentage, which was 82% and 102 students. So we're kind of around where we were last year, based on the data that we have so far. It's fairly similar and trending similarly. It is kind of important to note, though, that those numbers that we have there, there are still students right now that are going through the referral process, and likely will be additional students that will, if not, have not entered already, will be entering into that process before the end of the school year. I know that's something that Jen referenced and speaks to every month for you guys, so.
So all of the slides so far that we've shown you have really gone over, it's kind of a little bit extra, or gone a little bit deeper, I should say, of what I do every month. So I talk, like I said, I've talked about the financials, talked about the enrollment. Now you can just really see the makeup of our cohort right now in district. Does anybody have any questions about that piece before we move into some of the financials? Okay. So we did ask for an additional FTE this year. It is a .5 elementary school psychologist. Right now, we have 3.8 school psychologists supporting 300 identified students in grades pre-K through 5. The responsibilities for a school psychologist, they are completing all initial and triennial testing, they're delivering counseling services, they're supporting students in the MTSS process. And in addition, they also attend and often facilitate PPT meetings. So we have to remember that a school psychologist must attend PPT meetings in which they are doing counseling, in which they have done any testing. They are a very important person who has to attend those meetings, so they do tend to point of view. So if you look at the next graph, you had seen this prior, Joe showed this in his executive summary. We're going to focus on really the more left-hand side of this graph. If you see, the red bars show the school psych caseloads, and the black bar shows the evaluations. So we just, I just want to make sure that we are aware that the numbers that are captured are really the projected triennials for this year. So every three years, in order to determine if a student is still eligible for services, they must be tested. And the person that does part of that testing is a school psychologist. So these numbers that we have up there for evaluations are accurate right now for triennials, but they do not show the initial evaluation. So when students are referred for services, we don't know when those are coming. That could come any day. So right now, this includes some of the initials that we've seen so far, but it's also the triennial evaluation. So these numbers are only going to increase as the year goes on.
Does caseload refer to counseling?
Yep, yep, exactly. Good question. So the caseload, like Alan said, it refers to the counseling. So if you look over on the left and you look at preschool, there's a very small number of students who receive counseling, and that would be pretty typical, because those are our littles who come in at three-years-old, and they're there with us till five. So there's not a lot of students that have need of direct counseling. But our school psychologist there has, will be doing 43 evaluations, include triennials and some initials so far. So like I said, that is definitely going to be rising as the year goes on. Monroe Elementary, the school psychologist has 22 students on her caseload that she's counseling, and then she has 30 evaluations. You see quite an increase at Fawn Hollow, because we do obviously know that that's our biggest elementary school. And right now, our school psychologist there has 54 students on his caseload that he is doing direct counseling with. And then 40.
I was going to interrupt you.
No, it's okay.
Is that the combined, what the school psychologist and the school counselor sees, or just the school psychologist?
That's just the school. That's just the school.
What about the school counselor? School counselors?
She sees a lot of students, but they're mostly 504 students.
But we don't have the breakdown, though?
I don't have the breakdown for the school counselor now. I can find out for you.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's okay. You're fine.
It's a big number, so I was thinking it might be so, which is evil, but it's not.
No, no, it's not at this time. It is not.
No, that's a pretty big variable, is how many students are being counseled by the school counselor.
I could check into that number for you, but it's not, there aren't any special education students that are being counseled by the school counselor. I know that.
Oh, makes sense.
So really, there's more information on this chart, but that's what I'm really focusing on, because it's really just that backup information to look for the reasoning for our ask for the increase of the .5 FTE in the elementary schools.
So it would go to Fawn Hollow?
That would be, that, right now, that's where we're looking at, but it could change over time. But right now, those numbers are pretty significant, and really, they do need help there. And they're only on the rise because they are the biggest school, and I know that, you know, Lee talks about that all the time, and the number of kids that are enrolling, so.
Another question. School counselors, can they see MTS kids in the MTSS process, or does that work?
It's possible.
It's just only, because I know most schools tend to have, like, social workers instead of school counselors at the elementary level. That's why I'm asking.
It's definitely possible. It's definitely possible. Do they right now? Actually, Lee, can you answer that question?
Was the question we have access to the social?
Do the school counselors do counseling through MTSS? For MTSS kids?
Yes.
Versus the school psychologist?
I can speak for Stepney. Depends on the case, the connection. So right now, we have, our psychologist is working with a kindergarten group, doing curriculum with them. But our counselor also is on MTSS plans as well. Which really depends on availability and timing and the child.
And we have no social workers at the elementary level?
Yeah, kind of weird.
We have one social worker for pre-K through 5.
Their house at Jockey Hollow.
And then how many at the high school?
One.
One and a half.
And a half-time person at the alternative.
At the alternative program. But they're specific to the alternative program. And right now, the social worker at the alternative program is helping us, and they're actually doing counseling for our high school kids because we haven't been able to fill that .5 school psychology position. So they are helping us. She is helping us with that.
So if you had social workers instead of school counselors, social workers could see identified students?
I would argue in addition to school. No more.
Addition of what?
They definitely can, they definitely can, what was that?
You would need both.
Oh, no, you definitely would need both, yeah, for sure. But a school, a social worker that was at the elementary schools for more time would definitely be able to offset this counseling, for sure.
Right. Or it's an AM.
I didn't know that about school counselors at the elementary level. I thought they could do identified students. They can't.
Should it be? It's not in their standards.
Not or not, is what I'm asking.
No, I mean, no, definitely, they do for 504 students, but not for special ed students. Once in a while, if they had a relationship, if they were a 504 student. But we, because of the IEP, the school psychologist should really be overseeing that.
So it's been an unusual move for a district to not hire counselors instead of social workers at the elementary level.
We've got counselors.
Forever.
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 And it took us a long time to get social workers.
I think typically, you see both. If there's one, it's usually a social worker and not a counselor. But there's a, I mean, if there's a lot of, in my opinion, benefit to having counselors instead of social workers at the elementary school.
What are they?
You would see both. Well, MTSS or one, you know, that whole, like, tiered level of intervention. I could do a whole presentation on it.
Five minutes, go.
I have one, someone.
Any other questions about that? Okay. So moving on, talking about our rising costs and outplacements, we do have 33 students who are currently outplaced, which is 5% of our identified student population. The primary reason for outplacements, right now, the trend is because of social, emotional, behavioral needs. Our students need a higher level of care that we just don't have the support for in district. And it goes hand in hand, as you would anticipate, if we are outplacing more students, that transportation is going to increase as well, because we need to use private transportation companies to transport them back and forth to schools.
Going along with that, this graph really spells out the progression of the funds that we've allocated specifically to our sped public fund, tuition, sorry, system-wide. So you'll notice that there's a pretty sharp increase in our budget for next year. And really, the reasoning behind that, if you guys look at the FY 2025, we budgeted $1.2 million for our sped public fund tuition this year, and we've actually already exceeded that at this point. We have gone over, our actuals are 1.43. I apologize. It's 1.4 at this point. So we've, like I said, we've actually already exceeded, and it's only January. So that's why we have put in the increase in the budget for next year to account for some of those students that programming changes that we hadn't properly planned for, that we will have to. And in the same vein, you see that the public summer has increased as well, and that's because a lot of those students, especially some of our younger kiddos that we put in these outplacements, they require the additional support over the summer to prevent, you know, regression and recruitment. So that's really why you see the increase in both of those lines there.
Okay, and along that same lines, we, and I talk about this monthly, our tuition private lines have also increased. This is the most significant increase you're going to see in this budget. We have increased, we've, I've put in an increase of $804,000 from this year to next year. And that is due to the programming changes that we've had, that I've been talking to you guys about all fall. So there has been some significant increase in changes there. So that number, 804, is what we know right now, and everything that I've been talking to about with you guys all fall is included in that number. We do see a little bit of a dip in tuition sped private summer, which is kind of nice. It's little, though, those numbers are little. But that, sometimes, there are students who do not qualify for summer programming, and so we saw a little bit of a change there in that tuition private.
Every little bit counts.
Right. So then we look at our transportation lines, which we talk about all the time, as we know, the transportation, the cost of transportation is exorbitant, and it's only going up all the time. We've been very lucky that we've found a transportation company that has been able to fulfill all of our needs, which is wonderful, and they vet all of their drivers. So our students are very safe in these cars with this company. So if we look at our top line, our transportation preschool, there's an increase of $33,000 from this year to next. That is because of changes in preschool. We are already at $107,000 in our actuals right now. And every year, historically, in about a month, we usually, usually around February, we add a preschool van because of the increased numbers in preschools. So I can guarantee that we're going to go over in this line. So having said that, that is why I have, you know, made that increase of $33,000 for next year, to make sure that we're accounting for that preschool number. This is good news. The transportation sped system-wide line has actually decreased by $157,000. It's a lot of money. Why is that? It's because we have students that are graduating, who will no longer need transportation, and they were going farther places than some of our others. And also, we have, Mary Jo O'Golfe, we always need to say thank you, she's our administrative assistant, has worked very hard at doing ride-sharing for us with our students. So they're going in the same direction, and that has really helped us and saved us some money. The students may not be going to the same schools, but they're going in the same area. And we also are always talking to other districts to see if we can do ride shares with them. Sometimes it works out, sometimes it doesn't. So we have those opportunities. So that's really good, and it's really, really great thing for us, and so that's why you're seeing a decrease in that line. Transportation summer, that has gone up a little bit to $19,000, and that's just because of students who still are going to be attending summer programming, and the price has just gone up in that area.
Any left-sip in vans you have now? Do you have that allocated anywhere?
So when we, so it was costing us about, and I had said this in the past, about like $42,000 a year just to run our vocational program here in the building. This is a high school program. So we recruit that every year because we don't utilize it. And we've never had the community program before until we got the vans. So I can't really use a number there, but it would probably be more than that, because that, those kids that are in the community program go out all day long, so they're back and forth. So having the vans has really saved us a very, yes. And so far, we've had minimal issues with them, so it's been really great. I shouldn't have said that out loud, but. Okay, and this is our excess cost comparison. So if we look at FY '23, we received $700,000, and that is 70% of what we spent. Last year, we talked at length about the amount that we got back, we were supposed to get back 70%. Has been historical, but unfortunately, last year, everyone got cut, so we got about 68%, which came out to be $681,000. This year, as I had said last night, we're anticipating $740,000, and we'll know at the end of the month, when we get our first installment, as to what that percentage may be. So for next year, Ron and I worked on this together, and we have conservatively budgeted $997,000 for excess cost, and that's 65%. That estimate is at 65%. So that is a definitely conservative number for us for next year. And we always put this slide in every year, because it's just a good visual to see the amount of money that we're spending and the amount of money that we're being reimbursed. So if you look at the top, the per pupil expenditure goes up every year. This year, it's $18,863. We times that by 4 and 1/2 to get us $84,884. That is the threshold. We have to spend that amount of money in order to even qualify for excess cost. So that, when I talk about high-cost students, they have to, we have to spend at least $84,000 on those students. So this is an example of a student. So a student costs, his tuition costs $182,000. We take that tuition, we subtract the threshold, and we get the $97,592. Now, in a perfect world, we'd get all of that back, because that would be 100%, but we do not. So we take 70% from there, and it's calculated out to be $68,000, is what the state would reimburse us back at. So with that money coming back to us, our obligation for that student is still $114,000. So the formula doesn't change, it's just the per pupil expenditure that changes every year.[1758.04] year, it goes up. Questions about that?
The percentage could change.
Yeah, right, well, that, yes, the percentage could change, but.
No, I have a lot of questions about that, but not for you.
Right. Okay, so overall, with all these changes and the different allocations that we talked about tonight, my, our increase for next year is $680,000 from this year to, to next year. When we created this budget, we were really thoughtful about how to maximize resources, how to be, you know, think outside the box, and do all those different kinds of things to make sure that we're supporting our students the best that we possibly can, but we always need to remember that these are the students that we have with us right now, and that could change at any time, so that is where we are, does anybody have any questions?
No, I, I thought I'd have a lot of questions, but if school counselors can't see identified students, you're in luck.
Well, it doesn't help special ed, but I think the logic, if I'm right, is, is that like stopgap measure, right, so the role of the counselor is the tier one, the tier two.
Right.
Keep them from getting into special ed, you know, when it becomes a social emotional deficit, but is that like working? So I'm going to go back to the question I ask every year, and I was like, I'm hearing me say it, but like, when we looked at that school counseling curriculum, I know you guys instituted Ruler, that I would anticipate you'd see some change, but anything else, like, what does that tier one instruction look like for all kids from the counselors?
Well, I, I know that the counselors go into the classrooms and they work with students, for sure.
It's probably a dead question.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I can answer part of it, I'm sure there are people behind me that can answer it better, but.
Even the data I shared last night, I have.
I'm sorry, I missed it, I apologize if I'm making you repeat it.
No, 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 I just, I'm just, you know, we're talking about the counselor, I have 55 students that have 504 plans, now, I can't tell you exactly how many of them have counseling services directly on that right now, but I do know that that counselor attends all those meetings, helps with the development plans, is on many of those plans, not to mention going in and doing developmental lessons in all 25 of our classrooms four times a year, so that's just part of her role, not to mention running lunch bunches for tier one and tier two, so when we look at caseloads, and I look at my psych, my psychologist's caseload, you know, and then I think of her caseload, I hear what you're saying, Ellen, like, she's not, may not be servicing children of 18, she's servicing, you know, a lot of other children within our building.
I, I also feel like they are a liaison between like families and teacher, and so they're navigating and they're supporting a child who just might be having a difficult time because it's third grade, because it's fourth grade, because a pet died, because the parents are getting divorced, because they're, you know, like they're struggling to make friends, the transition is hard, plus the tier one, right, the coping, the regulation strategies, so they're doing all that developmental guidance stuff in the class, they're doing the tier one, and they're just responsive and supportive of students who temporarily or on a more ongoing basis need that support through them, like, they are busy, like, really, really busy.
That was just, it doesn't sound like there's much they could do to alleviate the caseloads of the school psychologists.
Yeah, and they're, and they can't, they wouldn't ever be able to do any of the testing, so.
Well, obviously, I'm talking about the counseling.
The counseling.
That's why I was mentioning social, we had social workers at the elementary level, I get counselors at middle and high school, I mean, it's wholesome, but at the elementary level, you would be able to shift case, you know, counseling caseloads around, who would need a .5.
Does that social worker help out at Fon Halla at all, or no, because there's such a heavy need at the.
She does, she does, I mean, she's also busy, but there are days, and they collaborate, my school counselor certainly collaborates with her, and we typically will use the social worker for our older students, and it helps with the transition from fifth grade elementary to Jackie Halla, so it just kind of makes sense, but they absolutely, and she's a, she's a well-known face, certainly for fifth grader students.
I mean, that, that Fon Halla is just a real standout, like, that's.
It's a language, yeah.
Incredibly significant.
A lot on one person.
Absolutely.
And the social workers district-wide?
The social worker.
K, uh, pre-K.
Pre-K, yeah.
And then there's a social worker here at the high school.
Pre-K to eight.
Four schools.
And we, we are so grateful to have that position.
Right.
We didn't, and even counselors, I mean, when I started as Fon Halla's principal 19 years ago, I had a .5 counselor. It was split between Stephanie and Fon Halla, and the fact that we're now, and that Stephanie's being full-time, to have that, it's just been amazing, so it takes time, but we get there.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, don't have so many slides, Mr. James, so curriculum professional development is really responsible for some big umbrella ideas that are happening across the district. Very thankful for Greg, for meeting with me, and also for the last couple of weeks, visiting with me and Evelyn and Kevin and the principals at the elementary school to see a lot of this work that we're talking about tonight in action, and he's actually joining us on Thursday, too, so it's been really helpful, as I was talking to him about some of these things, to point him out during the, during these visits, because seeing it in action is very different than just seeing it on a PowerPoint at this point. Overall, the increase for both sections, because there are actually two different parts of the budget, curriculum and professional development, but overall, the increase is about $25,000. The biggest part of that are those new high school courses and textbooks that you have all already, thank you very much, approved to have happening here, and then I'll talk a little bit about, you know, remind you of what those were, and also talk a little bit about MTSS supports, as Chrissy has mentioned, MTSS, how we are addressing MTSS in the district this year, has really brought up some needs that we're trying to address through this budget, and also, as we also, we've spoken about Ruler, and how that has become a really important part of our programming across the district, now being able to budget for that on an annual basis, where before, it was like through some grants, through some COVID grants, now budgeting for that more consistently. So, starting with curriculum, that $21,000 increase, $14,000 of it or so are those two classes, those textbooks, those AP Psych and environmental chemistry textbooks for those courses that I think everybody around this table were pretty interested in and pretty excited about, so those were, you know, were the biggest percentage there. The other two are really about our MTSS process, about $5,000 for a Lexia reading support program, and what Lexia does, it's an excellent program that works very well with elementary and middle school kids, what it provides for us is students can go into this program, take a diagnostic, and it places them in certain lessons in the program, some of it is computer-based, and then the teachers can take students out of that computer program and do some direct instruction, put them back in, so it's very helpful, especially during our wind time and our pause time, and we're really looking at it, and this year, we have been piloting really, very much so at the middle school with that, to really address some of those reading issues that are happening in the middle school, because secondary reading issues become very complex, and a program like Lexia does a nice job of focusing on specific student needs and supporting students and teachers through that, so that's $5,000, and then there's an additional $4,000 request to do OSAT testing now in grade three again, we used to do it in grades three, five, and seven, I believe, then we pulled back on OSAT testing to just grade five, it is what we use to identify our gifted and talented students, and also to give us another sort of benchmark for where students are beyond S-Back. We do know, as far as MTSS goes, that we're definitely there to support students who are in need of some remediation and some focused learning, but we also know that MTSS needs to support students who need the other end, need the enrichment, and so, as a district, we really want to start to address those kids who, in grade three, can be identified and can get some more support, and actually get pushed along even further than where they already are, so the OSAT is a great way for us to utilize that, because we don't have the S-Back until third grade, so to have something a little earlier for us to start to identify, hey, some kids that really could be pushed along a little bit, would be very helpful, so that's the additional 4,000. So the curriculum budget, that's the difference in that, so before I move on to PD, does anybody have any questions about those three, or anything else that came up?
Lexia's for high school?
Actually, we, we use elementary and middle school. There is also, also, sorry, there's also an MLL component of it, but we have been paying for that out of our Title III funds, which is for our MLL students, so there is that, and what's nice about that is they could also sort of graduate out of the MLL program into the Lexia program when they're, when they reach a certain level of proficiency, so it's helpful in that way, too. Okay. And the second part is really professional development budget, the increase of $3,624 is really driven by that Ruler platform, and access to Ruler, for what we get for Ruler, it's $1,000 a school a year, it's amazing what they provide for us, they provide so many resources, so many lessons, they provide coaching, if we want to coach from Ruler to come and talk to our folks, if you get an opportunity to visit our classrooms, especially K-8, and see Ruler in action, it's pretty impressive, I will just bring up, like, today, Greg was in some classrooms, and we do these, they do class charters, and they decide, like, what are, what are the words, how do you want to feel when you're in school, and it's like five different, you know, a lot of five or six different things, and what does that look like in the classroom, and one thing that we're really seeing in our school is we're seeing kids communicate, cooperate, and collaborate, and when it's not working so well, it's good for us to have Ruler to go back to, and to be like, are you doing all these things that we're talking, that we agreed to do? Ruler, I know, we have some great Ruler teams at our school, and they're growing those Ruler teams as teachers, and so we definitely don't want to back off from that, because it's a really important part of our programming for social emotional readiness, and that's $5,000 a year, but try to offset that with some savings in in-house professional development and external professional development, too, because we have been applying, and you mentioned grants before, we've been applying for some grants, I know when Kara comes to talk to you in a few weeks about a new reading program, she applied for some things, that's going to provide us some professional development that we would have had to pay for ourselves, but because we went through some training programs, they're giving us some stuff for free, which is great, so we're trying to make the adjustments where we can, to make the increases as minimal as possible. So those are the two areas, not a lot of asks, but still asks, any questions about that?
Yeah, what was that, 64 cents?
No, never. I know, right? I think that's chance.
You can blame for everything.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, I just, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, that's a big one, that's a big ask. Sorry, I thought I'd get this right underneath. All right, so, yeah, so, I know, we're asking for a teacher. The first bullet, you'll see currently, the number in front of you has gone up since the last time Joe was in front of you, since the holidays, we've gotten additional four students, MLL students, registered with our school, and.
Tomorrow, too.
And one tomorrow, and I think there's two more coming to Stephanie later on this month, so this number is growing, this is, so it's definitely an important area for us to address, again, two teachers are currently traveling to five different schools, I just want to clarify something, and this was, this is on me, you know, when Joe was talking about the, receiving the minimum recommended service minutes, that's really an issue more so at the elementary level because of scheduling, because of the block scheduling, and because of the way the schedule works at the middle school, we're doing pretty well at the secondary level, being able to meet those students' needs, so that becomes less of, that's less of our concern, it's really about getting more kids into the element, more, another teacher into the elementary level to be able to service that, and I think, Christine, you asked in December, like, what could this, we're going to get a lot closer to our minimums with this extra teacher coming in, and you know, the minimums are based upon, is it a newcomer, I mean, I don't want to make any judgments, but some of the students that we're seeing moving in are complete newcomers and have no proficiency in English whatsoever.
How much time would they get?
They're supposed, the minimum is 150 minutes.
But how much are they getting?
How much are they getting?
In Monroe?
60 to 90 minutes at the elementary level?
A week?
A week.
And how are the classroom teachers, are they getting any, I mean, to me, that's my bottleneck.
Yeah, and that's.
They're sitting in there, and they have no English proficiency at all, and they're being educated in English, and the teachers don't really have support.
Well, we have a phenomenal, two MLL teachers, you know, are, especially at the elementary school, Ashley, when they're not getting as much of that time, she spends a lot of time doing professional learning as much as possible with them, she pushes in whenever she can.
She's doing all the last testing, too.
She's doing all, that started, yes, that started this week, the last link's testing, she does all that testing, that they, every one of these students has to be tested, and even when students are dismissed, they have to be monitored for three years afterwards to make sure, and that's not that they're getting any services directly, but they have to be monitored to, to make sure they don't need some more support, so they don't regress, so.
Is some of this rolling over, like, I'm sorry if I'm going over the, Jen, are you seeing an impact, like, in the amount of translation services you need at PD teams?
We have a translation service.
Yeah.
Yeah, the testing is really more of an issue. By bilingual, people to do testing is very difficult.
There's people in Bridgeport that'll do it.
Because we usually call.
Depends on the language.
Bridgeport Public Schools has people that'll do it.
They'll farm them out to other districts.
Well.
Come on.
If you act nice.
They're a little busy down there.
I probably shouldn't have said, get anyone in trouble.
Mike, are students allowed to use translator apps?
Of course, absolutely, yep, and that's one of the things that we've done as much as possible can with professional learning, as in November, we had professional learning for all teachers across the board, in all schools, on MLL, on some of those, on some of those apps, and anything else that can, you know, support those students. I know that the reliance on the apps is not always great in the long run, though, for the students, and so.
How else do they get through their day?
Right, I know, and it's sort of like, and it's, it's sort of a balance of how much can you give them through an app, during, how much can you, you know, where, where does the direct instruction happen, and that's really where that time comes from, because they can only go so far with the app work, but, you know, that last bullet is really, Chrissy, exactly what you're saying, like, there, we don't have the opportunities right now for the push-in or the coaching that really needs to happen, and an additional teacher would make a huge difference for that.
It doesn't cover the need, but it, it's a step.
It is a step.
Yeah.
In the right direction, and, and the goal is, if we have that extra step, are we going to be able to dismiss more kids, and so that number can come down because we dismiss the kids, so not being able to address it will just make that need greater, even if we don't have kids move in, it doesn't, you know what I mean, it won't sort of help start to solve that issue.
We see some consolidation in different languages, I think last year, there was like 23 different languages spoken in the schools.
It's 15 right now in the schools, sometimes the home languages, you know, like.
That's a higher number.
It's a higher language, the kids might not have, the kids may not have qualified for MLL services, but those, you know, so those, that could be a higher number, which, you know, brings up a different thing for our communication as a school district, to parents who, you know.
Well, there's free services for parents to learn English, I hope you're referring.
Valley Regional.
Valley Regional, absolutely.
So, we're not quite at the point where we have enough of a consolidation in one school, we need 20 or more of one language in a school for to have a bilingual program, we're not there, and we won't be there for next year, because you take your October 1 number, and we're not there, so we know that's not going to be on the, that's not on the docket for next year, we know that already, so.
Thanks.
And now I'm done?
I better click it before you.
I know, right? Sorry about that, you guys, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, so thank you very much for that, don't forget, Thursday, 6:30, repeat button for hear, anything else in closing from anyone? Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Jerry, can I have a second? Christine, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, unanimous, good night, everybody.